This this this. This is the first video of the year, and I hope you like it. Thank you for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video. Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads. Thanks for watching. Please do consider subscribing, leaving a like, and sharing your experience with this video.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's ask the body shape. Yeah.
Good evening and welcome to the December 4th, 2024 meeting of the Arlington County Planning Commission. I am Commissioner Tenley Peterson, Vice Chair. Tonight, we will discuss the zoning fee schedule effective December 17th, 2024. There will be no recess meeting December 5th. This is our last meeting for the year. Before we begin, I would like to share a few logistical points for all participants joining the meeting remotely and in person. For presenters and speakers joining us through Microsoft Teams, please keep your phones and other electronic devices muted until you are called on by the clerk. Please turn off the sound to any devices around you to minimize interference. Please keep your cameras off until the clerk announces your name to speak. When called upon, you must unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon that is in the meeting command bar at the top of your screen. The moderator nor the clerk have the ability to unmute your mic. Once you have spoken, please mute your mic and turn off your camera. If you are dialing in by phone to join the meeting, press star six to unmute. Public speakers will be called upon by the clerk at an assigned time. Pre-registration and email confirmation to speak at tonight's hearing was required. We are not able to accommodate additional speakers. All speakers, virtual and hybrid, will receive two minutes to comment as an individual. Only representatives of a county board-appointed advisory group committee and/or commission will receive three minutes to comment. A timer will be displayed on the screen if speakers virtually and and speakers in person will follow the timer stationed on the podium. Audio of tonight's meeting is available via phone. If commissioners, presenters, or speakers lose internet connectivity, please reconnect by phone. However, if you are dialing in by phone and unable to see the screen, we will provide an audible 30-second warning to wrap up your comments. You will be muted when your time has expired. The meeting chat is active for presenters or commissioners who need technical assistance only. Please do not use the meeting chat for discussion, public comments, questions about agenda items, or requests for further information. All public comments must be shared verbally for the record during the assigned public testimony period. Tonight's meeting will be available for review through the YouTube platform. A link has been provided on the Planning Commission website 24 to 48 hours after the adjournment of the meeting. Although the meetings will no longer be a live broadcast, the meetings will be available for review with closed captioning on Comcast Xfinity Channels 25 and 1085, Verizon FiOS Channels 39 and 40, 24 to 48 hours after the adjournment of the meeting. Lastly, this is a public forum. Tonight's meeting will be recorded and posted to the county website via a link to YouTube as stated. All information associated with tonight's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act requirements. Madam Clerk, can you please call the first item?
Our first item this evening is in ordinance to amend the Department of Community Planning, Housing and Development's related fees as depicted on the zoning fee schedule related to adaptive reuse amendments effective December 17, 2024. We have Jill Hunger on the line virtually to present this item to us this evening.
Great. Thank you very much, members of the Planning Commission. Before you tonight is again a piece of how we're implementing the adaptive reuse and in specifically the fees. And while no longer compulsory, it has been a continued practice to bring zoning fees to our planning commission. I do have a brief presentation, but the report itself is very brief. So if it is up to, it's up to the planning commission, they would like to see a presentation or if you want me to speak to it.
I'm comfortable with you speaking to it unless other commissioner, oh, I'm getting nods. So speak away and that that will accommodate us. Thank you.
Perfect. Great. Again, this is, it is truly a way of implementing the adaptive reuse amendment that was just approved by the county board last month and heard by the planning commission last month as well. In that report that the planning commission saw, you did see a request to advertise for these fees, proposed zoning fees, and it allows us to accept adaptive reuse amendments as well as the final adaptive reuse amendment plan review. Without establishing a separate fee, it would have been challenging for us to accept it in our process. And just by by Virginia code, we did have to establish a new fee. So that is what is before you this evening. Again, there was a request to advertise, which went to the county board in November, and it is coming before both the planning commission and then the county board later this month. If you have any questions, I can answer them for you.
Thank you very much. Um, was this, I don't believe this was heard by any sub committees of the planning commission? No? Okay.
No, it was not.
Okay, thank you. Um. That was the, we chose to hear the commentary as opposed to the presentation. Oh, would, did you want to see the, I believe the presentation would also be very brief and we don't have a packed agenda. Would you also like the presentation to be displayed? No, we're, we're. Thank you, Ms. Hunger. Sorry, moment of levity on the bench. Um, Dias, sorry. Um. All right, with that in mind, I believe the matter is now with the the planning commission. Any clarifying questions or otherwise? I'm not going to attempt to come up with topics for this. I think it is one topic. So just if anyone has questions on the item, please raise them now. Commissioner Charlie?
I'll ask a quick question. Is there any rationale behind the number, coming up with the number and how like we arrived at it?
Sure, the, again, I think it's, it's actually in the report. But what we did is we modeled this after some of the minor site plan amendments in how they are processed and then took a reduction, a 50% reduction because the fee, there's a base fee. And then you also look at what what it is per 100 square feet of office and commercial or a fee per dwelling unit. We we halved that and the rationale behind behind having that is actually the building is already constructed. There would be limited change. Typically, the fees that are associated with with new buildings that are going up, there's much more extensive review that is going on. So in coordinating with my colleagues in planning, this was estimated to sort of help to cover some of some of the costs associated with this this review process.
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight that I think this is a really, really good thing that the county is working on. And we also want to put as many incentives and, you know, grease the skids, as it were, as much as we possibly can to have these buildings be repurposed instead of demolished. Thank you.
Thank you, and I believe Commissioner Sarley has advocated for that position throughout the past year or more on this body. So it is appreciated to have the continued consistency of that perspective. Um, any other questions or comments from commissioners? Yes, Mr. Robertson?
Jill, was the 50% reduction just a sort of rough justice? Or was there more analysis behind it than than what's obvious?
The the former.
Commissioner Burkey?
Yeah, so I was doing some rough math when I was looking at this. I mean, it feels like a pretty modest fee for most projects already, including the 50% reduction. So I think it the, it's not likely to be the case here. But but just generally, when thinking about fees generally, are there scenarios in which the development community, like we need to be considering like the scope of fees potentially being burdensome? Like in the context of, you know, soft development costs? I mean, here, this seems pretty modest when you pencil it out. But but Jill, like just kind of generally speaking, is that a concern that the staff typically looks at when determining fees?
Sure, and I'm going to be swimming a little bit out of my lane on this one. I believe last year with the budget cycle, there was a fairly in-depth analysis of our fees. There was a zoning or a fee schedule review. And in that, really, really parsed through all of the fees on the development side from zoning and inspection services, DES, and really took a hard look at that and had a conversation with the development community. So again, some of it's based around some some cost recovery. Some of it's, you know, and how much time does it take to to review it? And others were benchmarking against some of our other jurisdictions that surround us. So a little bit of all of that pulled together. So there might be, there could be instances where it could, it could be a high number. But again, it was grounded in some some ground truth thing.
Now, that's, thank you. And I'm remembering that about a year ago, that that coming up, I think even before the mission. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or feedback from the commission? Okay, I believe we are ready for a motion. If there is a commissioner who is prepared to make such a motion?
Oh, since I'm so supportive of this, I should make the motion.
I was only kind of looking at you, but yeah, I was basically expecting you to do it.
Let's see if I have this right. I move that the planning commission recommend that the county board adopt the attached ordinance to amend the Department of Community Planning, Housing and Development, CPHD, development-related fees as depicted on the zoning fee schedule related to adaptive reuse amendment fees effective December 17, 2024, for the reasons required by public necessity, convenience, general warfare, and good zoning practice.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Sarley and seconded by Commissioner Lintelmy. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Um, in that case, I believe we are ready for a vote. Um, I will start to my right. Commissioner Burkey?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Lintelmy?
Aye.
Commissioner Ware?
Abstain.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger votes aye as well. The motion passes eight to zero with one abstention. Uh, thank you very much, Ms. Hunger.
Um, thank you all.
I believe that resolves that item. Um, thank you. I believe we've moving on to, Ms. Clerk, can you call the the next item?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Just for the for the minutes, I've had a couple people give me funny looks. It probably, it might be worth recording that the reason that I abstained is that I missed the briefing. Many people probably inferred that, but if it needs to be included in the minutes, then then I just wanted to mention it. If it doesn't need to be included in the minutes, I apologize for robbing every one of 45 seconds.
No, I'm fine with that. That's going to be Commissioner Peterson's problem for next month, but like, that's fine. Um, thank you. Thank you for providing that for the record. Um, Madam Clerk, please call the the next item of business, which I believe covers a few things.
Yes. So we'll have the approval of our November meeting minutes. Any current matters that Mr. Pfeiffer may have approval. And we do have SPRC and LRPC rosters and our chair and vice chair election for 2025.
Thank you. Um, would anyone like to make a motion on the minutes? I believe we need to do this separately because we had different attendees for each evening. No. Okay, then I will look for a joint motion for the minutes. Oh, unanimous consent. Can I get that? Great. Motion passes by unanimous consent. Minutes are approved. Look at that. Um, Mr. Pfeiffer? Anything?
Just a brief personnel update from staff. Starting in January, we will have two members of the current planning team going on maternity leave. So we have our own Emma Martin, who is one of our associate planners on current planning, being promoted to an active acting position, filling in for Chrissy and Courtney, who will be in maternity leave. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Just to be clear, you're replacing two people with one person?
Well, I am also personally going to fill in. So there will be two people. So I'll be I'll be wearing two hats.
Okay, just wanted to clarify on that. Okay, thank you. Appreciate the the personnel update on that. And please pass along the planning commission's congratulations on the impending arrivals. Excellent. Also, what was nine months ago? No, just kidding. Okay. Um, uh, we have SPRC and LRPC rosters. Commissioner Peterson, do you want to start with SPRC rosters?
Give a quick update. I sent you all the email, but thank you, Commissioner Steinberger, for taking on the SPRC for 2,500 Wilson Boulevard and Commissioner Bagley for doing Boston One and the Walgreens site at Lion Village Shopping Center. I have emailed a couple of others about projects, so please let me know. And also, please check your emails. And also, Commissioner Bagley is going to be taking over the role of SPRC Subcommittee Chair. After three fun years, I am passing the reins to her. So thank you very much for taking that on, should be working with Matt Pfeiffer on administrative updates as well as SPRC projects, chairs, members, rosters, et cetera. Over the last three years, we have completed 20 SPRC projects. So it's been busy. We have eight currently active projects and then five more in the wings. So please get ready. And over the last three years, we drastically changed and improved the SPRC process, partially because of the pandemic, but also we were able to bring in more community voices while also streamlining meetings. So we updated our SPRC membership approach as well, introduced rosters, assembled standard operating procedures, and have made administrative updates to make our SPRCs run smoother, including we're going to be getting plant species and landscaping covered during the SPRC process now. So that is going to be an update rolling out shortly. So thank you all for working with me on SPRCs for the last three years. You all have obviously been instrumental in making them all successful. Thank you to Mr. Pfeiffer for all of the work. You've been a friend over the last three years. And I'm always impressed at your adept management, impressive knowledge and memory, and friendly disposition. So thank you, Commissioner Bagley, for taking over. And now we will approve my last two rosters as SPRC Chair. So colleagues, I'd like to ask for your approval to have unanimous consent to adopt the 3033 Wilson Boulevard roster.
Without objection?
Okay. And then colleagues, I'd like to ask for your unanimous consent to amend the Melwood SPRC roster.
Could you please confirm what the amendment to that roster is?
Pardon? The amendments were to add churches in the neighborhood to
That's right. We had, so we had one amendment for an additional representative for the Arlington Ridge Civic Association. We had a request from the Crystal and Pentagon Cities Council to remove their name from the roster. So that's being done. And then we're adding the three abutting churches.
Thank you.
I think you have to remake your motion now that I asked that question.
Oh, okay. Colleagues, I ask for your unanimous consent to amend the Melwood SPRC roster.
Without objection, so moved.
That's it for me.
Okay. And who has LRPC rosters?
I can handle this one. Okay.
Commissioner Burkey?
Looking at Commissioner Patel, because we're trying to figure out who's going to chair this one. Okay, you can chair that? Okay, well, I'll make the motion though. I will ask for the planning commission's unanimous consent to approve the LRPC roster for the 1320 North Court-Hastert Special Glove Study. Seeing no objection?
Without objection, so moved? That's like right here, right?
Yep, it's pretty close.
Currently an apartment building? I feel like I lived there. Sorry, tangent. Just curious. Okay, thank you. Is that the only roster for the LRPC?
Yep, that's it.
Okay. Um, then I believe we are ready for elections for next year. Um, Mr. Pfeiffer, there was nothing else, right? Yep. Okay. Um, so as I understand it, I, as the outgoing chair, make the motion for an incoming chair? Did I get that right? Okay, excellent. So it is my great pleasure to nominate Commissioner Peterson to the role of Chair. Over the past year, she has served extremely capably as a vice chair and really partner and friend, you know, in this role, as we've, you know, sort of tag teamed items, as she has oftentimes started this meeting, because I tend to run approximately five to seven minutes late due to childcare and or parking, which I am very appreciative of, including this evening. So thank you. And I know that we will be in very good hands as a planning commission with her at the helm. So that is who I am nominating for Chair.
I second it.
Thank you. So seconded. Um, I believe we move to a vote on that position now. Okay. So the motion before us is for Commissioner Peterson to serve as Chair for the incoming year of 2025. Commissioner Burkey?
Aye.
Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Lintelmy?
Aye.
Commissioner Ware?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Um, Commissioner Steinberger also votes aye. The motion passes nine to zero. Thank you. Um, I believe now the tradition is that the incoming chair nominates a vice chair.
Yes.
Right. So I would like to nominate Commissioner Nia Bagley to be our vice chair for the 2025 year. Nia and I have worked together for more than five years. We were appointed to the commission at the same meeting in 2019. Nia has lived in Arlington for more than three decades. She was the president of her civic association for many years. She's very active in real estate, so she has a good pulse on on that industry, which has so much to do with what we do as a commission. Our dearly departed county board member, Eric Gottschall, recruited her to be on the planning commission, and I think he had a good eye for who would, what she would bring to to the community. Nia cares deeply about her neighborhood and the broader community on projects. She always makes sure voices are heard and that staff and applicants are responsive. She's also agreed to chair the Site Plan Review Subcommittee, as you all just heard. So she's a great team player. And she's been involved with park advocacy and has a certified backyard wildlife habitat, which is great for our biophilic Arlington. So I hope you all will join me in supporting Commissioner Bagley to be Vice Chair for 2025. I second.
I think the motion is moved and seconded. We are now going to vote on the vice chair role. Commissioner Burkey?
Aye.
Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Lintelmy?
Aye.
Commissioner Ware?
Aye.
Mr. Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger votes aye. The motion passes nine zero. Thank you. So I believe with that, we have completed our elections for the coming year. Those are the only positions we elect for, correct? Okay, great. So done. Um, and I, oh, okay, Commissioner Peterson is requesting the opportunity to speak, so I will yield the floor to her. I think that's the end of our meeting otherwise. I mean, I could keep us here to like dance around and do other stuff, but that seems inadvisable. Okay.
I have had the opportunity to meet Commissioner Steinberger, our current chair, when I was appointed to the P planning commission. But her service to the county has started much longer before that. As many of you already know, she served on the Historic Affairs and Landmark Review Board for several years. And she was Vice Chair of Arlington's World War I Commemoration Task Force. So we should hear some stories about that. She started serving the community as soon as she moved to Arlington and because public service is important to her. Sarah is refreshingly authentic. She doesn't mince words. She gets to the point of issues, and she handles public comment with dignity and respect for those speaking to us. And she gives each and every commissioner the chance to speak their mind at these meetings. All of us at the Dais also appreciate how efficiently she ran meetings over the past year. I think this might be a record when we get out tonight. And to keep us all sane, Sarah is fun and relaxed and approachable. She is the mother to both a toddler and a golden doodle doggy, both of whom who have attended planning commission meetings. So if you like dogs, this is out to the public, please join us on any of our walking tours because Achilles is likely to be there. So on behalf of the commission, thank you, Sarah, for your leadership this year, and I present you with the official TC gavel for chairing the planning commission for 2024.
Um, thank you. I appreciate this very much. I will take my, I will take the opportunity and I guess chair discretion for the last time I can do it. I will have you guys out of here soon, but I do want to say a few words. It's been a really impactful year. I wasn't really sure what to expect. I mean, I Vice chaired last year and then for this year, I sort of like, I knew I knew what the role was, but I had not fully appreciated what the gravity of, you know, chairing these meetings and really being that kind of somewhat public face to the to the community in a much more visible way than even as as vice chair. And I was just, you know, really saying to Commissioner Sarley as we were coming in that it's been really gratifying for me to get to work so closely with our county staff and with the, you know, all of my fellow commissioners to really see the effort that goes into all of our subcommittees, that goes into, you know, the staff effort behind the scenes and being in so many more of those meetings and just understanding that, you know, what goes into the work before we see an item come to us, you know, for a vote or whatever kind of informational item, and maybe as a planning commission body. And so it is sort of a bittersweet moment to, you know, let that go. I am, you know, relieved to to get some time back, because it's time consuming, for the coming year and to step into more of an active role on LRPC. But it's been wonderful, you know, getting to really work with all of you guys and to, you know, experience the planning commission role through through that lens as as chair and to have that kind of heavier involvement. I know we are in very trusted hands for the coming year, and I'm excited, you know, to to see where that takes us. I do take great pride in running an efficient hearing. And I sometimes use the opportunity, as I think you guys have noticed, to test out some of my comic material. So whether you like that or don't like it, tough luck, tough luck. Um, Mr. Bagley likes it. So on that note, I am greatly appreciative to all of you. And thank you. You've really made the my time as as chair very gratifying. And I'm not going anywhere except I think moving like a chair over or something like that. Giselle will work that. Madam Clerk will work that piece out. So thank you all. I appreciate everyone. And I guess for one last time, I'm gonna gavel us out. Thank you.
Very good. All right.